Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bae of the Moors Parade and I'm Ante Kalorah. The acronym is ANPAC and a chief judge of counsel court. Today is Class 152, Class 152. What did we learn in Class 151? Well, we started going over what's commonly known as the question, right? When you're dealing with law, law is always about questions. You always try to present a legal lawful question. Well, you're questioning what? You're questioning the law. Is there a law that answers the question, right? So whoever is asking the questions controls the narrative, right? So in our last class of Class 151, the question was what? Who has what? Who has a right of protections in Morocco? That was the question. Who has the right of protections in Morocco? And what do we learn in Class 151? Well, the word rights means what? Law. So when you take a look at that question, you have to add a word to the question. Who has the right of law to protect people in Morocco? It's all about the right of law. The word right is always attachment to law. But what type of law? Public law. You must know the difference between public law and private law. You see, public law is regarding the state. You're talking about politics of the state. You're talking about the three branches of government. That's public law. Anytime the state passes laws, it becomes public law. When you're talking private law, private law is between two people or a group of people that has nothing to do with the state. For an example, private law is like a law that may be a part of a church. There may be church laws, right? So within a church, a church has private laws. But church law is not binding on the general public. But when the state passes laws, all the inhabitants, i.e. all the citizens or nationals within that territory have to adhere to the public law. When we talk about private law, private law is not binding on all of the citizens or nationals or inhabitants of that territory. So we start talking about the question, right? Let's take it to the board. Who has the right of protections in Morocco? That was the question in Class 151. But you add a word to this. It says, who has the right of law, right? I wrote the word law right here. Law, right? Because we're talking about what? What are we talking about? Rights. The word rights and laws are what? It's synonymous. Anytime you see the word right, you're talking law. Okay, so the word law is synonymous to the word rights. So if the question is, who has the right of law of protections in Morocco? Okay, that's the question. Well, guess what? We as Moors were failing at this question. What do I mean? You see, when you ask the question, who has the right of protections in Morocco? And the word right is affiliated to law and law is based in public law. What is recognized as public law? Guess what's recognized as public law? Constitution. What type of constitution? State constitution. So Morocco, the empire of Morocco was in a void in the absence of a public law, commonly known as the constitution for the empire of Morocco. So since the empire Morocco had no constitution after the year 1945, what happened in 1945? The Charter of the United Nations came out. And the Charter of the United Nations started to set forth reforms that says under what's called civilized nations. Civilized nations needed what? A constitution to recognize what? Their state. Because the state sets forth what? Public law. So the Moors have been in the absence of laws for their empire Morocco because there was no constitution. And the constitution is the first law of the land. Why is the constitution the first law of the land? Because it's a contract amongst the people. The people come together and they formulate a contract amongst themselves to create the republic. But the republic is recognized by the constitution. And the people vest the powers into the state. The state is recognized by the constitution and the constitution recognizes the three branches of government. The constitution recognizes the nationality of the people, right? And the constitution recognizes the territory that you're claiming under that constitution. So the constitution is the public law. It's the first law of the people. And the Moors were in the absence of an empire of Morocco constitution. The Moors took the time to legally have a constitution of the Moors Science Temple. But is that public law? No. Even the Moors Science Temple will tell you the temple is what? A religious corporation, which means that's private law. Then the Moors turn around and say they had a constitution for the Zodiac Constitution. The Zodiac Constitution never talks about the empire of Morocco. The Zodiac Constitution never set up three branches of government. The Zodiac Constitution never talked about a head of state or head of government. It never talked about the nationality of being Moroccan because that's the proper nationality in the treaties. As a matter of fact, the Zodiac Constitution claimed all the territories of planet Earth, which is a violation of international law. Under the word called utipasiditis juris. Therefore, the constitution for the Zodiac Constitution is what? Private law. Meaning it has no standing in law. The Moors Science Temple's constitution is private law. It has no standing in public law. You must make the distinction between public law and private law. Public law comes from what? The state. Private law comes from private institutions. So when you look at the question, it says, who has the right of protections in Morocco? Well, when you use the word right, you're talking law. So tell me the name of the law that recognized the state called Morocco. We didn't have one until the year 2024, when we finally drafted the constitution for the empire of Morocco. The constitution for the empire of Morocco starts to set up what? The law. The constitution for the empire of Morocco recognized Morocco as an empire state. The constitution for the empire of Morocco is public law and it recognized the head of state as Sultan. The constitution for the empire of Morocco is public law that recognized the three branches of government, executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch. The constitution for the empire of Morocco, which is public law, recognized the territories. So you have to understand, the first thing the Moors had to do as a status of constitution for the empire of Morocco, that's all the Moors had to do. And then the people have to turn around and do what next? The people have to recognize the constitution of the empire of Morocco. Well, who are the people? Moors. Well, right now, the Moors suffer from cognitive dissonance because the Moors think they're Americans. Well, how can the Moors ever become nationals of the empire of Morocco if they think they're Americans? Because Americans are not Moroccans and Moroccans are not Americans. So what I'll continue to do today in Class 152 is to keep talking about how can Moors return to the empire of Morocco and pledge allegiance under the public law so they can get their rights in Morocco? And once they have their public law, public law rights in Morocco, now they can get what? Protections. So all the Moors have a right to come back to the empire of Morocco and do what? They can petition. They can fill out an application to be recognized by the empire of Morocco. But if they don't petition, they don't fill out the application for the empire of Morocco, your biological mother to recognize you, then how is your biological mother going to recognize you when you don't even recognize her? You see, the onus was put on the Moors that once they became of age, meaning adult age and no longer minor, now they are major because they're aged 18 or older. Once you become an adult, you have a right to choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. That's Article 15 of the Treaty of Madrid of July 3rd, 1880. The onus was put on the Moors to come back and recognize their own biological mother. It was not the obligation of the biological mother to go seeking her children. The obligation was on her children to come seeking their mother. But how is it going to find their mother when their mother was an abstract that did not exist on paper? In order for the Moors to discover their own biological mother, they had to discover her through a constitution of public law. So we started learning in Class 151 that once the Moors wake up and realize that their nationality is actually Moroccan and not Moors American, because Moors American is a compound adjective, it's not a nationality. That's why they don't put it in the dictionary. You'll never see the word Moors American in a treaty. You'll never see the word Moors American in any international correspondence. The United States does not even recognize Moors Americans as an autonomous political group of people. So in Class 151, we start talking about, okay, how do Moors subjects, because Moors subjects, that's the proper name in the treaty. What does Moors subject mean? Moors who have yet to pledge their allegiance back to the empire of Morocco. It's Moors who have failed to pledge their allegiance to the constitution of the empire of Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan as head of state. It must be a political allegiance. That's called a public law allegiance because you're pledging allegiance to what? The constitution, which is public law. So in Class 151, we start talking about, okay, we can start talking about what's the journey the Moors have to take to pledge allegiance back to the empire of Morocco? Well, one of the things we learned in Class 151, we started talking about the Treaty of Madrid of July 3rd, 1880. Article 5, Section 4 says the Moors have to finish up their criminal cases before they could turn around and get protections from the empire of Morocco. That's Article 5, Section 4 of the Treaty of Madrid of 1880. And unfortunately, what we have learned is that the Moors was unaware of Article 5, Section 4 of the Treaty of Madrid of 1880. You've got thousands of Moors right now in jail because their teachers never told them about the Treaty of Madrid of 1880. They didn't even tell them about it. Much less tell them about Article 5, Section 4 of that treaty. They gave the United States, the several Union States, and all of their municipalities a right to adjudicate Moors before those Moors have a right to pledge their allegiance to the empire of Morocco. So now that the cat's out the bag, right? The cat's out the bag now. Because anybody go back and watch Class 151, they're going to learn that the NAACP is not going to tell you these truths. Anybody who watched Class 151 will learn that the HBCU presidents are not going to tell you the truth about Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 5, Section 4. Anybody who watches Class 151 is going to learn that the Grand Sheiks have never told the Moors about the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 5, Section 4. And guess who else hasn't told you? The United States, the several Union States, and the municipalities. What is it that the courts keep telling Moors? Oh, everything y'all saying is what? A belief in patting frivolous. Isn't this what they keep telling Moors? Okay, they say that. Then why isn't your so-called public defender, whomever it is that you hire as attorney? Why isn't the public law showing in the several Union States about these treaties? Why isn't the United States is not just simply telling these black people that they're Moors? What is it about the nationality of Moroccan that's such a big secret? The United States don't care if your nationality is Haitian. They don't care if you're from Trinidad. They don't care if you're from Mexico. They don't care if you're from Cuba. They don't care if you're from Venezuela. But what is it about the nationality of Moroccan that they keep hiding? It's because the nationality of Moroccan represents sovereign. The nationality represents the sovereign people of the land. And this is why the United States does not want to talk about the nationality of Moroccan. If anything, they tried to make it what? Obsolete. Did they try to? Did the United States try? They attempted another conspiracy to strike Article 15 from the Treaty of Madrid? That should tell the Moors something. If the United States is going out of their way to commit a human rights violation of crime against humanity, potentially even a genocide act in part, that should have told the Moors. If the United States is so desperate to strike Article 15 from the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, then that must be the solution to our problems if they're trying to eradicate the solution to the problem. The United States has always known that we were Moroccans. But you must understand why the United States never had to tell us. It's because the United States hired overseers to tell us we was every name but Moroccan. Now, I know it may irritate some people when they hear me going in on their favorite teachers, especially their spiritual teachers, but ask me, do I care? I don't. You know why? Because I'm going to keep telling the truth. Because all your so-called master teachers have lied to you. They've deceived the people. So instead of sending me messages to ANPAC study session about, please tell Jay Bae to calm down talking about Taj and Farrakhan and this person, that person? No. I tell you what, stop contacting me and go contact Taj and ask Taj why he didn't teach you what it is I've been teaching you. Don't ask me questions. Go ask your master teachers questions. Don't tell me not to talk about Farrakhan. Go talk to Farrakhan and ask Farrakhan why did he teach you that you were Moor, i.e. Moroccan, instead of him calling you the black man? Don't ask me no questions. Go ask your so-called master teachers to tell you the truth. Then come back and talk to me after you've talked to your teachers. Because I'm going to keep doing my job. You know why? Because I'm a judge. You know what judges do? Judges speak about the law. They read the law out loud. Judges are judge people. And my job is to sit here and tell you the truth. My job is to expose the lies to see when you come to court, guess what court is for? Is to extract the truth from the lies. That's what court is for. Is to try to sell it based upon the material facts combined with the discovery of law. So what Moors got to understand, the ANPAC study session is an educational platform to educate the people, but that education is also to point out what? The miseducation, to point out, to show the fabrication that's been taught to our people. And ANPAC study session is going to move forward and keep talking about the truth because the people deserve to know the truth. And anybody got a problem with the truth, then go talk to your teachers and ask them these questions. Because it's all about the question. And I guarantee you, your teachers, your so-called teachers will not want to answer the questions. If you watch ANPAC study session and you write down a few questions, go ask your so-called teacher to answer these questions. They won't do it. They know the ANPAC study session is exposing them and they can't handle the questions. Now, everybody already knows, I have on several occasions say, set up the panel. All the people that send me messages telling me, please stop talking about Taj and Farrakhan. No, go tell Taj to set up the panel. Tell Taj to challenge me. He won't do it because he knows I'll expose him. Tell Farrakhan to set up the panel. He won't do it. He knows I'll expose him. Tell the NAACP attorneys to set up a mock, M-O-C-K, a mock trial, a moot court, right? And challenge it. Let's set up a mock counsel court. NAACP attorneys, they won't challenge this information. They know they've been lying to the people since the year 1909. The HBCU presidents not going to set up the panel and challenge this information? They too be interested in getting grants and making their six figures as presidents. So anybody got a problem with ANPAC study session? That means you got a problem with yourself because you can't handle the truth. We don't keep talking about the truth because the truth shall prevail because we're going to decolonize the empire of Morocco whether the people like it or not. Let's get to the class. So everybody knows, I always open up the constitution. The constitution is paramount. What does paramount mean? First. So when I ask the question, Class 151, who has the right of protections in Morocco? What does that mean? What does right mean? Who has the law? But what type of law? Public law. What does public law represent? The state. So the question was, who has the right of law, public law, of protections in Morocco? And that is what? The constitution. The constitution is what provides protections for all. It's the republic. The constitution is the shield of protections for we the people. And we never had protections. This is what people got to understand. The constitution is paramount, constitution of Morocco and the internal constitution of the several Moors states that come under the umbrella of the constitution for what? The empire of Morocco. Here's the constitution for the empire of Morocco. Now, this is just the cover page, okay? Because it's 106 articles in this constitution, but it's just a cover page. So this constitution for the empire of Morocco sets up what? It answers the question. Who has the right of protections in Morocco? Well, here's the answer. The constitution for the empire of Morocco gives the right because this is what? Public law, which sets up what? Rights, because rights is what? Law. So you're looking at what? Law. That's law. You're looking at it. It's 106 articles. That's what give you protections. The constitution? Anybody who studies international law knows it's all about constitutions because constitutions are a subject of international law. What do I mean? When I say a constitution is a subject of international law. It means that constitutions is public law of a state and all states come under the jurisdiction of subject matter jurisdiction of international law. See, international law acts as a protection of all states. International law is like the HR department. It maintains what? Compliance amongst states. So without a constitution, in the, what they commonly call in the contemporary times after 1945, everybody had to have a constitution if they were going to claim that they have a state. So the constitution for the empire of Morocco was what? Paramount. It was first. But we could not establish the constitution of the empire of Morocco initially. Why not? Because the Moors had to first come together and organize themselves through their internal Moors states first, like ANPAC as an example. ANPAC took over a territory, right? Called what? Colorado, right? And there's other Moors out there who established a constitution to take over territories, just like ANPAC. So all those internal Moors states had to come together as interdependent states, all come together like Humpty Dumpty because Humpty Dumpty fell down and broke into pieces. Well, how do you put Humpty Dumpty back together again? Do you put Humpty together by just putting Humpty back on the wall, but you didn't put the pieces back together? That's not realistic. So how do you put Humpty back together? You have to take the pieces, right? And put them back together and that's how you make Humpty whole again. So the empire of Morocco was what? Broken up into parts. We have to make it whole. So first, we have to start off with internal constitutions, internal constitutions for each of the territories, such as ANPAC overtook over what? Colorado, right? It's ante Colorado, meaning Moors before. That's what ante means. Ante Colorado. You see? So once we put together that constitution for a small territory, then after that, we can pledge allegiance and come under the constitution for the empire of Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan, because the Sultan is head of state. And the constitution is paramount. So when you start looking at the treaties, the treaties recognize what word all the time? It's called what? Morocco. You keep saying Morocco, Morocco, Morocco. Morocco is what? An empire. So the high contracting party on the contract is who? Morocco. But it's an empire. So we had to add this word, empire of Morocco. Why do you have to add the word empire to it? It's because the Europeans undermined the empire in Mohammed the Fifth. Mohammed the Fifth was the de jour Sultan in 1956. But the European states, United States of America, France, et cetera, they got Mohammed the Fifth under coercion to step down from being Sultan to establish a brand new state on planet Earth, a modern state called Kingdom of Morocco. So as soon as Mohammed the Fifth agreed to add the word Kingdom of Morocco, it immediately forced the Moors to make a distinction between the Kingdom of Morocco and who? Empire of Morocco. But always remember, there's almost an oxymoron to say empire of Morocco. Why? Because Morocco as a standalone word means what? Empire. But we have to add the word empire to make a distinction between kingdom and empire. It's the only reason why we added this word. But the treaties recognize what word? Morocco. All right? So who was the high contracting party on the treaties? Morocco. But Morocco is an empire. That must be understood. So it's first, right? What makes it first? Because it's the high contracting party on the treaties. So anytime the Moors want respect, 100% respect, you have to lead with your legal argument with what word? Morocco, empire of Morocco. But what have the Moors been leading with? They leading with what? Moors Science Temple. That's not the high contracting party name on the contract. Moors have been leading with what name? Moors American. That's not the nationality in the contract. The contract says you're Moroccans. What have the Moors been leading with? Oh, I'm black, so I'm going to go use the Oh, I'm black, so I'm gonna go use the NAACP to get some civil rights. That's not the name on the contract. The contract says empire Morocco for Moroccans, and when you try to lead with a legal dispute to say you're black, you're gonna lose. Did it say empire of, of Indian reservation? No. Did it say empire of Cherokee? No. You must understand why I'm pausing here, because in contract law, I'm talking law right now. I'm talking law. And I'm talking rights. We never, as Moors, had rights as Moorish Americans, 'cause there's no such thing in the treaties. We failed, and we need to admit it as Moors. We need to all look in the mirror and say, "We failed because we were miseducated." It wasn't for a lack of effort. It wasn't for a lack of sincerity. Everybody stood on their square as a Moorish American, even me. I was a Moorish American for at least three years. I was standing on my square. Until I started doing scholarship instead of followership and worship. Once I really started to quote-unquote "read" the treaties, I realized I could not find the word Moorish American nowhere in international law. But I could find the word Moroccan everywhere. So you must understand, the Constitution of Morocco was the first law the Moors needed to establish, and then the internal states that's all over the empire Morocco have to establish internal states and then pledge allegiance to the empire Morocco. We'll talk about that today. About allegiance. Because in Class 151, we start talking about what? How did the Moors' subjects come into what? Pledge their allegiance, return to Morocco and pledge allegiance. We surely start talking about the Y zero Regional Council Trustee Ship Council. So the WRC Trustee Ship Council, right? Is gonna help the Moors with what? With this right here. Registration, orientation, right? To help the Moors to fill out their application to return to Morocco, to be recognized as who? What's the nationality? Moroccan. But the WRC Trustee Ship Council also help you with what? Renunciation, to renounce the jurisdiction, to renounce your who? Your adopted mother state. Your adopted mother state is called who? United States of America. But if you're in Canada, your adopted mother state is called who? Canada. If you're in Great Britain, your adopted mother state is called who? Great Britain. If you're in, if you're in France, your adopted mother state is called what? Republic of France. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You have to renounce her and go back to your biological mother, which is who? Empire. Empire of Morocco is the high contracting party name on the contract. On the treaty, and treaty supreme law land. There is no higher standard of a contract than treaties. There are no other contracts on planet Earth that have a higher status than treaties. And according to the treaties, the Moors all had an obligation to follow the instructions of the treaties. In the Treaty of Madrid of July 3rd, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, Paragraph one, gave a mandate for any subject of Morocco who been naturalized in a foreign country shall return to Morocco. It said, "Shall return to Morocco." And do what next? Choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. Well, how are you gonna submit the entire submission of the laws of the empire when there was no law? Now, we have a law. It's Constitution of Morocco. This is what the Moors was missing. Constitutions. So why am I taking my time right now? Why am I underscoring this word called Constitution? You see, what you're gonna learn today, I'm gonna show you, that it's all about the fact the Moors had an obligation to pledge allegiance to the empire Morocco, but the only way you can do that is pledge allegiance to the state. But what recognizes this thing? It's the Constitution. Without the Constitution, the Moors will always be subjugated in a foreign country's jurisdiction. The key word for all the Moors was Constitution. And I know some Moors keep back saying, "Oh, but we already have a Constitution." That was private law and not public law. We'll talk about those definitions today. Right? Matter of fact, let's go ahead and jump on in, look it up now. It's called private law versus public law, okay? We gotta do this, Moors. Okay. Uh, Brother Joseph from, from the top. Blacks Law, Blacks Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition, definition of private law. Let's go.
Private law, as used in contradistinction, contradistinction to public law. The term means all that part of the law which is administered between citizen and citizen, or which is concerned with the definition, regulation, and enforcement of rights in cases where both the person in whom the right inherits and the person upon whom the obligation is incident are private individuals. See, public law.
Alright, so under the definition of private law, and reasons follows. As used in contradistinction to public law, so what's it say around the top? Saying, "Private law contradicts public law." It means there's a distinction between public law and private law. It tells you right off the top that the two are not the same. So private law, in the Blacks Law Dictionary, says, "As used in contradistinction to public law." The term means all that part of the law which is administered between citizen and citizen. So what's private law? It's like when you get married. You sign a marriage certificate between you and your spouse. That's private law between you and your spouse. That's private. That's not public law, 'cause your marriage has nothing to do with anybody else besides you and your spouse. That's a private contract between you and your partner. What else is private law? Well, let's say you, you sign a lease agreement. A lease agreement is private law between you and who? The property management company. That's private law. That contract has nothing to do with anybody else outside of that contract. That's private law, 'cause that's still a contract. So, okay, from the top. Private law is used in contradistinction to public law. The term means all that part of the law which is administered between citizen and citizen. Did it say between the state and citizen? No. See, it's a unilateral act, right? Or bilateral act between you and another person. Let's say you, you become a member of a church. Well, the church bylaws have nothing to do with anybody outside of that church besides the members of said church. That's private law. But that church laws are not binding on all the citizens, nationals, inhabitants of that entire territory. So Baptist laws of the church are only for Baptist people. Jehovah Witness laws are only for Jehovah Witness people. Moorish Science Temple's laws are only for Moorish Science Temple people, but the Moorish Science Temple's laws are not binding on nobody else outside of the Moorish Science Temple. Okay, so from the top, we're talking private law. As used in contradistinction to public law. The term means all that part of the law which is administered between citizen and citizen, or which is concerned with the definition, regulations, and enforcement of rights in cases where both the persons in whom the right inherits and the person upon whom the obligation is incident are private individuals. See, private, private individuals, see? So it's private. Private individuals. Now, let's read the definition of public law. 'Cause it tells you off the top, private law is a contradistinction to public law. They, they both oppose each other. They're different. Okay, just a moment. Alright, Blacks Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition. Public law, Brother Dre, from the top.
Public law. That branch or department of law which is concerned with the state in its political or sovereign capacity.
Pause. Start from getting in.
Public law. That branch or department of law which is concerned with the state in its political or sovereign capacity.
So right in there, we're already learning, public law's about what? The state. Private law, they mentioned nothing about. The state. From the top, your brother.
Public law. That branch or department of law which is concerned with the state in its political or sovereign capacity, including constitutional and administrative law, and with the definition, regulation, and enforcement of rights in cases where the state is regarded as the subject of the right or object of the duty, including criminal law and criminal procedure, and the law of the state, considered in its quasi-private personality as capable of holding or exercising rights or acquiring and dealing with property in the character of an individual. That portion of law which is concerned with political conditions, that is to say, with the powers, rights, duties, capacities, and incapacities which are peculiar to political superiors, supreme, and subordinate. In one sense, a designation given to international law as distinguished from the laws of a particular nation or state. In the, in another sense, a law or statute that applies to the people generally of the nation or state adopting or enacting it is denominated a public law as contradistinguished from a private law, affecting only an individual or a small number of persons.
Alright, so in the end, they were working backwards. It says, "Denominated a public law as contradistinguished from private law." So even in the end, under definition of public law, it makes a distinction between public law and private law. We read private law, it made a distinction between private law and public law. It's telling you, these things are totally different. It's night and day. So, let me show you something really quickly. You see right here, the definition of public law, he's talking about the state. It says, "A designation given to international law." What's a designation given to international law? Public law. So international law is public law. And international law governs over all states as if HR compliance, rule of law. And public law is what? Is a designation given to international law. So international law is public law. As distinguished from the law of a particular nation or state. So international law is distinct from state law. International law governs over state law. Anytime states enact laws that violate international law, international law can come in as compliance and say, "That's a violation of human rights." So public law is superior, okay? Listen, right here. See it right here? Public law, public law is what? Is what? Political superiors. Public law is what? Supreme. Supreme of what? Private law. But public law is political superiors and supreme based upon what? It's based upon this word called what? Constitution and state. You see that? The Moors were in the absence of what? The superior law, commonly known as a constitution for the empire Morocco. We were in the absence of superior law for the territory called a constitution. For what? The state. That's the state. Listen, the state has a constitution, and the constitution is based in what? Public law. This is what the Moors was missing the whole time. What were the Moors using in the place of public law? Okay, let's go back to it. Let's go back to it. They were using what? Private law. The Moors kept saying, "All your birth rights come from where?" The Moorish Science Temple. But the Moorish Science Temple is what? A religious corporation, and corporations are based in what? Private law. And the state law is superior over private law. So all this time, the Moors have allowed the United States of America, who has a constitution, and the Moors kept saying, "Enforce the Constitution." Well, whose constitution? They were enforcing the United States of America's constitution. Which was the what? Superior law over what? Private law of the Moorish Science Temple. Now, Moors told me to go out and get the Blacks Law Dictionary. I paid two hundred and seventy-five notes for it, and come to find out, the Moorish Americans themselves haven't read it. But now, guess who's reading it? Moroccans. 'Cause Moorish Americans don't read. That's no disrespect to Moorish Americans, but the Moorish Americans have been in followership and worship. They have not been in scholarship, 'cause they don't even know the distinction between private law and public law. These are simple fundamental definitions we're looking at. To tell you the truth, this is kind of embarrassing. I stand here as your fellow Moor. I'm your fellow Moor. I'm talking to all the Moors right now. No matter what name you call yourself, whether you call yourself Negro, Black, and Color, you are a Moor. Whether you call yourself Moorish American, you are a Moor. I'm talking even to Moroccan nationals right now. It's embarrassing that we haven't simply read the instructions. We haven't read nothing. This stuff is in our faces, and we keep blaming the white man and calling him the devil. And this man you call white is putting all these terms into books and calling it Blacks Law Dictionary. You know why they call it Blacks Law Dictionary? 'Cause blacks don't read the law, 'cause they put it in a book. So we gotta know the distinction between private law, which is, listen to me, I'm about to make a point. The Moors have been pledging allegiance to who? Private, private individuals. Private individuals who you've been pledging your allegiance to. That's private law. But you didn't pledge your allegiance to what? Under public law, the state. You have to know that private law has hurt the Moors. It has slowed down our progress. We have delayed our own justice because we have private individual allegiances to individuals. But under public law, we never pledged allegiance to the empire of Morocco. You know why? It's because the FBI and the CIA did an excellent job of punking the Moors and punking black people into submission to keep telling them, "Go out there and tell everybody that you are American." You see, after they assassinated Noam Chomsky, because he was saying he was Moroccan, not only was he saying he was Moroccan, he said he was a descendant of Moroccan. And the man was waving that Moroccan flag back and forth. He was talking politics. He was trying to get you to pledge allegiance to the empire of Morocco, and next thing you know, he's assassinated. Assassinated by who? Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans assassinated Noam Chomsky. Oh, they don't wanna talk about that, though. And don't get me wrong, right? They had some help from the FBI. But the reality is, no one was trying to tell us we're Moroccans. And no one picked up on that clue. Why would they assassinate Noam Chomsky if he was saying we was Americans? They wouldn't need to touch him if he was saying everybody's American. After Noam Chomsky's assassination, everybody came out of the temple saying what? "We're the true Americans." Oh, they were standing on that square. Everybody was Americanized. Then here comes Resolution Seventy-Five of nineteen thirty-three. The Philadelphia Moors said, "We're Americanized. We're former Moors." We're former Moors." The great sellout. And all the grand sheiks have been standing on that square that we're Americans. Taj Street Bay is the main one, he talking about we're the true Americans and everybody else is Europeans. It's not true Taj Street Bay, we are Moroccans. This is sad. It's embarrassing that we can't read. Listen, what did the Empire Morocco need? It needed a constitution that recognized what? Well, first of all, the party name is the Empire Morocco. Empire Morocco represents what? External sovereign independent state. And we had to do what? We had to put the Sultan as head of state back in his office of the state. Then we had to establish what? The three branches of government in order to start to allow and help and assist who? Moor subjects. Moor subjects. Cause that's the name in the treaty, Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty. Keeps talking about Moor subjects and the Sultan. All the Moors treaties only talk about the Sultan and the Moor subjects all the time. So what do the Moors need to do in order to return to Morocco, right? They're trying to return to Morocco. And they're trying to pledge allegiance, right? So, what do they need to do? They need to contact the WRC Trustee Ship Council, right? Cause the WRC acts almost like a halfway house in itself. But it's a positive halfway house, cause it's based in what? Public law. Then why is your regional council, trusteeship council operates in public law? Cause the WRC trusteeship council is recognized by what? The constitution of the Empire Morocco. The constitution of the Empire Morocco recognizes the WRC trusteeship council. So now, since the public law of the Empire Morocco recognizes the WRC trusteeship council, that means now the WRC trusteeship council can act as, coming on this public law to assist the Moors through this positive public law council. To help you do what? With registration, right? Orientation and to assist you with what? Renunciation of the United States. Citizenship. You must renounce the United States. And then pledge allegiance to what? The state, or what's the name of state? Empire Morocco and the head of state, His Majesty, the Sultan. Right? So this is what Moors Americans have to do. You're not Moors Americans, you're actually just Moor subjects who are naturalized as being Americans. And you have to follow instructions to return to Morocco through the WRC trusteeship council. That's called procedure law. We'll talk about that in other classes up and coming. I won't get into the step-by-step reform, but I'm letting the Moors know just on the surface, these are the steps. First, you gotta know you're a Moor subject. If you don't know that you're a Moor subject, you can't even start taking the steps. What does the treaty call you if you're still naturalized? Let's talk treaty law, cause treaties supreme over land. Let's go to it real quick. I gotta do it. Let's go to the treaty. This is the right of protection in Morocco, the Treaty of Madrid of July third eighteen eighty. Know you got some idiot out there. In the last week, this fool called Cujo Il. He put Anpack Study Session on his YouTube channel. So shout out to Cujo, I appreciate the shout out there, Cujo. But uh, some Cujo gotta understand. You told all the Moors that the Treaty of Madrid was nullified in seventeen sixty-one. Well, good brother Cujo, I don't know if you can read or not. But it says right here, it says, "Convention signed at Madrid on July third eighteen eighty." Sir. July third eighteen eighty, not seventeen sixty-one. The foolishness. Now, good brother Cujo, I'm gonna let this one slide. Because I see that you're trying to undermine the Moors and miseducate them. You're trying to muddy the waters with lies. So I'm gonna let this one slide. This one's on me. So I'm gonna show you, it's the Madrid Convention of July third eighteen eighty. But guess what, good brother, don't make that mistake again. Next one's gonna be on you, alright? So please, good brother, tell the truth. So the Treaty of Madrid of July third eighteen eighty is in full force and effect to this very day of September twenty twenty-four. That's what the Moors gotta understand. But good brother Cujo, you gotta be careful, brother, because uh, the Moors are studying. And they're going to recognize that you have been lying to them. They're gonna recognize that you've been trying to distract them from the truth. And now that you've told on yourself in your most recent video this past week, going in on Anpack Study Session in the so-called Anpack Colorado Moors. But like I said, I appreciate the shout out, but same time, you can't be lying. You gotta be careful, good brother Cujo. Moors are studying. And they're gonna go back and look at all your videos when you were trying to go in on Anpack and they're gonna realize that potentially you might be co-intel pro. Let me get back to point. Alright, so Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, I gotta underscore the word what? Moor subject. So let's go to it real quick. Moor subject, right? Cause the parties must be known. I know I've gone over this a million times, but I'm keep on going. So Article fifteen, Treaty of Madrid, right? Of what year? Eighteen eighty, Cujo. It's about what? Says, "Any subject of Morocco shall return to Morocco." So it's what? Any subject of Morocco, so it's what? It's what? Moorish subjects. These are Moorish subjects. You see that? You say, "Well, that don't say Moorish." Okay, let me, let me find the word Moorish for you. Hold on. See that word right there, Cujo? See right there? Moorish. That's Article nine of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. You see right there, it says Moorish. See, he's talking about Moorish. You see that? It's Article nine, Cujo, if you wanna look it up. Alright, so, going back to Article fifteen. It's talking about what? The subjects of Morocco, right? So it says, "Any subject of Morocco," right? So it's any subject of Morocco, so the subjects of Morocco, but they're actually Moorish subjects, okay? Alright. So right here, Moor subjects. If you're still naturalized, you're listed as a Moor subject. But you're trying to establish what status? You're trying to become what? A Moroccan national, isn't that correct? Isn't that what that journey is all about? Now watch this. I'm gonna be redundant. Listen. Going back to eighteen eighty, Treaty of Madrid of July third eighteen eighty, Cujo. You look right on the, right on the Article fifteen sixteen, you go down to the footnotes, Cujo. And it says, "What is the Moor's nationality?" It says right here, Moroccan nationals. Right here, we're Moroccans, Cujo, not Americans. And damn sure as hell ain't Moors American, cause Moors American is a compound adjective. But Moroccan is a noun. And the United States is trying to keep us from establishing our Moroccan nationality again. And so are you. So it's all about Moroccan nationality. It's about the Moroccan government. It's about rights in Morocco. You see that? Let's go to the question, Cujo. Who has the right of protections in Morocco? You see that? Who has the right? Moroccans have the right. But how, who's gonna have a right? First, we have to be right to have the right what? Law. What type of law do we need? Public law. Not private law. Public law is superior. Public law represents what? The state. You see? Listen, what do I have up here? Oh, my goodness. Excalibur. Let's talk about it, cause we're talking about the Sultan now. We're talking about the Sultan now. Okay, listen up. First of all, let me show you the Sultan. Let me show you the Sultan. We're gonna talk about His Majesty the Sultan, who was elected on May twelfth twenty twenty-four. Is Abdul Smith Al Khabir is the Sultan. Sultan of what? The Empire Morocco, the high contracting party on the treaty. We're talking contract law. We're talking public law. We're talking what? Superior law. Cause treaties are superior. And what else is superior? Constitutions. So Abdul Smith Al Khabir took his oath of allegiance to what? The constitution for the Empire Morocco, which is public law. He took his oath to the office of what? Sultan. Listen. Going back to Excalibur. Excalibur. What was Excalibur all about? Right? Young author, right? Author, that was the name, author. He didn't know that he was a king. Right? So as a boy, he's running around thinking he's an indentured servant on behalf of some knights. So Merlin, the magician, puts author amongst knights and stuff and so that he can be what? Poor and learn what it is to be amongst the people being poor as a peasant. But he starts working for a knight. So, while that knight is doing what's coming on his jousting back and forth, that knight was missing his sword. So author runs around, he's looking for a sword to give to the knight. And what happens? This sword was calling his name out in the woods, in the forest. Listen, I'm about to make a point. What does this mean right here? What is this symbolism right here? Do you see the symbolism? Okay, let's break it down. We're talking Sultan. We're talking Empire Morocco. We're talking His Majesty, the human being called Abdul Smith Al Khabir. Listen. What was this all about? Well, first Excalibur was stuck in a stone. And nobody could pull it out, right? Everybody, this Excalibur, everybody trying to pull the stone, pull the sword out of the stone. They couldn't do it. But author walks up and he just grabs the sword and he pulls it right out, easily. Then the people found out that author had pulled the sword out and they told him, "Go put it back." The people said, "Put it back in the stone." So he went back up there and put the sword right back in the stone. And then word got out that he pulled the sword, cause the sword represents what? The king. The sword represented the office. Whoever pulled the sword out was going to be king of what? The land, the territory. So the stone represents what? The stone represents what? The land, the territory. The sword represents what? The office. Cause the sword in this particular movie represented a king, but in example for Moors, it represents Sultan. And that sword was stuck in the stone. It was just stuck waiting for who? The proper heir to pull it out. But guess who can only pull it out? The proper person in law. Keep in mind, in the movie, Merlin, the magician. Merlin, right? The magician. Morelin, Merlin, Morelin. Morelin. Morelin, you know, I used to live in Atlanta, Georgia. Atlanta, Georgia had a street called Morelin Avenue. They changed it to Metropolitan Avenue. But it was called Morelin Avenue and nobody knew that Morelin Avenue represented the Moors. Because Morelin Avenue is on what side of town? The bad side of town. Where all the Moors live. It's called Morelin Avenue. So in this movie, Merlin, Morelin, Merlin was overseeing author his whole life, protecting him, watching him from a distance. So author gets called by the sword, the sword calls out to author. Author runs up on the sword, pulls it out. Everybody tells him to put it back in there. Then the people said, "Let the boy try. Let the boy try." Cause a lot of people tried to take the sword out the stone after author put it back in there. The big strong guys came, they tried to pull it out, they couldn't. They said, "Let the boy try." So he walks back over there with one hand, he pulls it out. Right? Do you see the symbolism? You know what this is called? The Trinity. The Trinity, listen to me. The stone represents the state, the land. The territory, the state. The sword represents what? The office. Cause they said whoever has the sword was king. So the sword represents symbolism of whoever carries the sword is who? The king. But the land and the office meant nothing, cause it was just sitting there for years, just sitting there in the stone. The state was inactive. It was anarchy across the land. Until a what? Human being, human being had to pull the sword out. You see, the state, the Empire Morocco, was in a shallow grave, just like the Excalibur. Excalibur was in a shallow grave. Who had to pull it out? The human being. See, the human being makes the land and the office manifest. It's manifest by a human being. That's the Trinity. Land, office, human being. Cause the human being has to sit in the office and the office represents the state. But the constitution is what recognizes the land and the office first. It's paramount. Then a human being can sit in the office. So without the land, the state, and the office, then the human being has nothing to inherit. The human being makes all of this manifest. Because the human being pulls out the sword of Excalibur. The sword represents the Sultan. Just like in the movie, The Precious Lord of the Rings, everybody chasing around the ring. Everybody was chasing this sword. Who was the only person who could pull a sword out? The person that was already predestined. And who was predestined? The Moors. You see, author represented someone who was poor, an indentured servant. That's who the Moors are, indentured servants. We fell all the way to the bottom as Moors. We became everybody's property, cause we used to be at the top. And guess what? When you don't respect the fact that you're in charge, that you're the authority over people, you will lose that authority. When you abuse your authority, you will lose it. And the Moors abused their authority and they found themselves at the bottom. That's what author represents. He came from the bottom, even though he was born into what? Royalty, but he didn't know. He didn't know until he pulled the sword. So all this time, the Moors have been the true heirs of the land. The Moors have been the true heirs of the office of Sultan. But the problem is, the Moors never pulled out the sword because they did not know that they were Moroccans. Only a Moroccan could pull the sword, just like author was the only person could pull the sword. Now listen. But what's the next step to that Trinity? So you got the land, which is the state. The sword, which represents the office of Sultan. And the person who makes it manifest to pull out the sword. The human being makes all this abstract become organic and come to life. Becomes manifest. But how to become manifested? How to go from manifest to manifested? It's the people. See, in the movie, the people recognized author as the king because author was able to pull the sword. But if nobody was standing there while he did it, it would have accounted for what? Nothing. He needed the people to recognize him as being king, even though he pulled the sword. If the people did not recognize him, he still wouldn't be king. But what recognized him officially as being king? It was the sword. That's the office. But what's the next level? The republic has to recognize both the state. The republic has to recognize the office, which is the sword. And the people, the republic, have to recognize the head of state, which is the Sultan, the human being. And once the people recognize the Sultan, that makes it fully what? Manifested. It comes to its complete circle. Now I want to make sense of this. This is a reason why I showed the Moors is I'm making a point, we're going to come back to this. Keep in mind, this is a trio. What? State, office, the sword and the human being who recognizes the office as being Sultan. And then the people recognize the state, the office and the human being who sits in the office, which is Sultan. We're going to come back to this. Listen. Check this out. Because we're still talking about how do the Moors return to Morocco? How do they go through the steps to be returned? Well, first they have to understand the substance of law and the procedure of law. What, what, what proof, what evidence? Can we provide to the people, to the Moors say, why is it that you have to pledge allegiance to the state? Okay. What do I have up here? This is the International Court of Justice, the case of Western Sahara. Okay? This case came out in nineteen seventy-five. Nineteen seventy-five. We're going to read the overview and then we're going to read one of the judge's opinions. Now keep in mind, in this case, it was ten opinions from ten different judges. We're going to read a little bit, just a little bit about what one of the judges said. Judges Castro. About the Moors. All right? Now the Moors can find this reference point. Just Google International Court of Justice, Western Sahara case. Okay? All right, brother Dre. From the top.
Overview of the case. On thirteen December nineteen seventy-four, the General Assembly requested an advisory opinion on the following questions. I was, uh, Western Sahara, Dario D Oro. Zakik Hamar. At the time of colonization by Spain, a territory belonging to no one, Teremolus. If the answer to the first question is in the narrative, Martanian, thank you. In its advisory opinion delivered on sixteen October nineteen seventy-five, the court replied to question.
One.
One in the negative in reply to question two. It expressed the opinion that the materials and information presented to it showed the existence. At the time of Spanish colonization, the legal ties of allegiance between the Sultan of Morocco and some other tribes living in the territory of Western Sahara. They equally showed the existence of rights, including some rights relating to the land, which constituted legal ties between the Maritanian.
Maritanian.
Maritanian entity as understood by the court in the territory of Western Sahara. On the other hand, the court's conclusion was that the materials and information presented to it did not establish any tie of territorial sovereignty between. The territory of Western Sahara and the Kingdom of Morocco or the Maritanian entity. Thus, the court did not find any legal ties of such a nature as might affect the application of the General Assembly's nineteen sixty resolution fifteen fourteen. Containing the declaration on the granting of independence to colonial countries and peoples. In the decolonization of Western Sahara and in particular of the principle of self-termination through the free and genuine expression of the will of the peoples of the territory.
All right, so what are we talking about right now? Okay. We're talking about, oh, in Africa. Okay, in Africa, this case was about the kingdom, Kingdom of Morocco in the year nineteen seventy-five. Kingdom of Morocco. Not the empire. And Mauritania. Were fighting over a territory called Western Sahara. Okay? I know it's a little blurry, but it's Western Sahara. So in the case of nineteen seventy-five, the Kingdom of Morocco was trying to lay claim to this territory and the people. Mauritania was trying to do the same, trying to claim this territory of the land and the people. But as a quick brief, the International Court of Justice turned around and said, well. We, we see that the King of Morocco is trying to make a claim and we see Mauritania is trying to make a claim. But the reality is that people of this territory has declared their independence. Under resolution fifteen fourteen of December fourteenth of nineteen sixty. However. That did not stop the King of Morocco from still trying to lay claim to this territory. And it did not stop the King of Morocco from trying to lay claim to the Moors that was in the territory. So listen, we're talking allegiance. Let's, let's go back now. So the International Court of Justice was trying to determine, what, what is the status of how do Moors? Right? How, how, how do Moors start to have allegiance? Let me just word. How do Moors start to establish allegiance? Between themselves and the Sultan of Morocco? How do Moors pledge allegiance between them and the Sultan of Morocco? You see that? This is a case of nineteen seventy-five. Okay? Now spoiler, Kingdom of Morocco was not successful in this case. Why? Why couldn't Kingdom of Morocco make a claim to the Western Sahara?
Because they're no longer a part of the empire.
Well, it's because Kingdom of Morocco is a brand new state. That's not the high contracting party name on the treaties. The name on the treaty is Empire Morocco, not the Kingdom of Morocco. The treaties recognize what is an office? Sultan. Not king. Sultan. So the King of Morocco could not be successful in claiming the territory of Western Sahara. Why not? Why not? Okay, watch this. Why not? Because. The king of King Morocco was not the Sultan. So since the king of the King Morocco. Which is Mohammed VI at this time. Right? But at the time in nineteen seventy-five, who was the king of the King Morocco was Hassan II. But to this very day, in the year twenty twenty-four. Hassan II's son called Mohammed VI is still annexing the territory of the Western Sahara. But they are kings today and not what? Sultan. See, the parties must be known in any contract. If the King of Morocco wanted to lay claim to a territory in the Empire Morocco, then they would need to be the Sultan. And it would still have to call themselves the Empire Morocco and they don't do none of the above. So in this image right here, the king was trying to pull the sword out. And he couldn't do it. Why? Because the king of King Morocco was not the Sultan. Right? So the Sultan of the Empire Morocco, who's the Sultan right now, is Abdul Smith Al Khabir. Out, because he sits in what? The office. He holds Excalibur. Listen, this is one of the judges in that case. So he gave what's called a separate opinion of Judge De Castro. Any of the Moors want to look it up, okay? Let me go back to the, uh, to the website. When you go to the website for the International Court of Justice and you see the case. Then you want to look over to the right and you're going to find a gray box of links you can click on. You're going to go down to what's called advisory opinions. You're going to find ten. Ten, okay? You're going to find ten, once you click on it. You'll find ten. Declarations by judges. Right? All these are judges, it's ten of these opinions, okay? And you'll click on English. You'll click, click, click the English tab and you better read that particular judge's opinion. Okay, y'all got it? Okay, listen, so we're going to click on, uh, one of the judges by the name of Castro. De Castro. De Castro was a judge from Spain. And he's going to keep it real. Now let me prove to the Moors that this case has something to do with Moors. Okay? So first thing we'll do is go down and show you evidence about the Moors. This is page one fifty, in case the Moors looking for it. On the Western Sahara case. Western Sahara, a separate opinion by De Castro, page one fifty. And it's about who? Who's it about? It's about what? The independent Moors, you see that? It's about the independent Moors, nineteen seventy-five. They're talking about Moors in nineteen seventy-five. But who else are they talking about? Okay. The Sultan. You see how the Sultan is always mentioned? The Sultan and the Moors are always mentioned. So anytime you talk about the Moors, you must talk about the Sultan. Anytime you're talking about the Sultan, you must talk about the Moors. It's yin and yang. This is the International Court of Justice nineteen seventy-five, talking about the Sultan and the Moors. But at the time, there was no Sultan in nineteen seventy-five. Because the Sultan stepped down in what year? Nineteen fifty-six. So why are they talking about the Sultan in nineteen seventy-five? It's because they were reading the treaties out loud and the treaties recognized what office? Sultan. But who was trying to make a claim to Western Sahara? A king. Why was, why was the King of Morocco not successful in annexing the land? With a proper legal argument is because they're not the proper party in the treaty. There is no king in the treaties. So therefore, it was not a contentious dispute based upon a political contract. Because there was no treaties technically that the Kingdom of Morocco could use. Because the King of Morocco is not the high contracting party on the treaties. It is the Empire Morocco and the Sultan. And that's why the King of Morocco could not pull the sword out the stone in order to make claim to the Western Sahara. Listen, I just want to show the Moors first nineteen seventy-five, they're talking about Moors and the Sultan. So let me ask a question before I get going. Why haven't the Moors been talking about the Sultan? The Moors Science Temple never talks about the Sultan. The civic Moors never talk about the Sultan. How can you call yourself a Moor and not talk about the Sultan? So you know who they replaced the Sultan with unfortunately? Under private law? Good brother, Noble Druali. And Noble Druali said not to worship him. But under private law, the Moors did it anyway. All this time, under public law of treaties and constitution, talking about head of state and not head of a religious corporation? Who's the head of the religious corporation of Moors Science Temple? It's Noble Druali. But who's head of state of the Empire Morocco? The Sultan. Now do you see why the grand sheiks don't talk about the Sultan? Because then they would have to talk about the state. And the FBI and the CIA have pumped the Moors Science Temple to get them to say that everybody's American. That way they didn't have to talk about Morocco and the Sultan, you see? But yet, it's in their questionnaire, their one-on-ones, question thirty-four says, who's the ruler in Morocco? What's the title of ruler? Sultan. Okay, then if that's the case, why don't they talk about the Sultan? It's because to talk about the Sultan, you'd be talking about public law. To talk about Noble Druali is private law. You see? And that's no disrespect to Noble Druali because it's not his fault. He, he transitioned in nineteen twenty-nine. So don't blame Noble for the fact the Moors have turned Noble Druali's status into a Sultan. And that's considered what? Frivolous. According to law. What type of law? Public law does not recognize a religious corporation. And public law does not recognize your leaders of your private institutions. It does not recognize them as having equal standing. It's not equivalent. Private law and public law are not equivalent. Which one is subordinate? Private law is subordinate to public law. Private law is subordinate to public law. But the Moors think private law is equivalent to public law. And it's not. So when you get done arguing with other Moors, they keep putting private law and public law on the same table as public law. And it's, that's why it creates confusion and this is why the Moors are saying, well, the Moors movement is based in what? What are they calling? It says what? Truth and falsehood strangely mixed. Well, stop saying truth and falsehood is strangely mixed and extract the falsehood. Isn't that so easy? Get rid of the falsehood. Why keep allowing that to be the status quo that it's truth and falsehood strangely mixed? No, someone's maintaining the lies. That's the problem. They don't want to separate private law from public law because they don't even talk about public law. Because they're talking about public law, you have to talk about the Sultan. And if you talk about the Sultan, you have to talk about the Empire Morocco. If you talk about the Empire Morocco, you have to talk about Moroccans. If you talk about Moroccans, then you have to talk about the obligations of Moroccans to return to Morocco and pledge their allegiance to the entire submission to the laws of the empire. And the FBI and the CIA never wanted the Moors to pledge allegiance back to the empire. And they certainly didn't want them to pledge allegiance to the head of state, which was the Sultan. Listen. Now that you see the word independent Moor, it's on page one fifty of Judge De Castro's opinion. Okay? Now, let's go down to, uh, what I'm about to show you is a little bit of information. About the fact why the Moors could not have a personal allegiance. The Moors had to have a public allegiance to the state and not a personal allegiance. All right, listen. We're on page. One thirty-six. Okay? Page one thirty-six of De Castro's opinion. All right? And on page one thirty-six. It's going to talk about allegiance. Okay? Okay, brother Dre. From the top.
In the oral statements of Morocco, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance. Hearing of second of July, the bearing of this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons, not territories. The territory of the vassal is not directly subject to the overlord. It is subject to him only indirectly during the period of allegiance. And that allegiance ends and must be renewed at the death of the Lord or the vassal. In the period of colonization by Spain, the Sultans are masters of the territory which falls de facto under their sovereignty. And seek to become masters of the territories which they regard as belonging to them de jour in the Bledseba. In any case, a territorial claim such as Morocco's claim to the territory of Western Sahara cannot be founded on a personal allegiance.
All right. So from the top. It says, in the oral statements of Morocco, so the King of Morocco in their oral statements stated. We find the assertion that, this is the judge is saying, we find Judge De Castro saying, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state. See what he's saying first? He didn't say Sultan first. He said the Moroccan state conforms to traditional monarchy idea of personal allegiance. So now, the judge just separated the state from what? Personal allegiance. Personal allegiance to who? The Sultan. So right here. Says the word Sultan. So the judge is making a distinction between Moors have a personal allegiance to the Sultan. Okay? But some of the Moors had a what? Legal tie allegiance. Legal tie. Political tie allegiance to what? The state. So some of the Moors had a personal, personal allegiance to the Sultan. And some of the Moors had a legal allegiance tied to the state itself of Morocco. So some of the Moors were pledging allegiance under public law to state. And some of the Moors had a private law allegiance directly to who? The Sultan. Private law allegiance to the Sultan. So in the end, what does the judge say? Listen. You gotta really listen to what this judge is saying to the Moors. I'm gonna break this down for the Moors, don't worry about it. It says, the Sultans are masters of the territory. What does master mean? Head of state. The Sultans are masters of the territory. So the Sultan means masters of the territory. So territory means what? The state. They have a state. Which falls de facto under their sovereignty. And seek to become masters of the territories which they regard as belonging to them de jour. So Sultans, under personal allegiance, the Sultans were claiming the territories under monarchy. Listen. In any case, a territorial claim such as Morocco's claim to the territory of Western Sahara. to the territory of Western Sahara cannot be founded on a personal allegiance." Why is the judge saying, people can't claim territories as an individual? The Sultan must claim the territory by what? The state has to claim it and not the individual Sultan. The Moroccan state has to claim a territory and not the individual head of state, the Sultan himself. Listen. They're talking allegiance. Who are they talking allegiance about? The Moors. I'll show you, they're talking about Moors from the top. "In the oral statements of Morocco, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance." See, they want the Moors to pledge allegiance to who? The Sultan. But the Moors have been pledging allegiance to what? The state. You following me so far? See how the judge is breaking it down, but you gotta catch it. It starts from the beginning. "In the oral statements of Morocco, King Morocco that is, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state, dot, 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 conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance. The bearings of this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons, not territories." You see that? So if the state does not claim the territory, then that means the state can't have jurisdiction over said territory. If the Sultan's only claiming the Moors as individuals under what's called personal jurisdiction, and the Sultan was not using the state to claim the land and the inhabitants, that means the Sultan couldn't just claim the land. He was just claiming he had jurisdiction over each Moor. And this is where this word allegiance starts to come in. Just follow me, be patient. They're gonna keep saying this word allegiance. But the allegiance was put on the owners of who? The Moors themselves. That's why I showed you in the front, it says independent Moors. What does independent Moors mean? Independently, the Moors have to do what? Recognize the state and the Sultan. But if the Moors independently was only recognizing the Sultan, but not recognizing the state, then the state didn't have jurisdiction over any territories, but the state might have jurisdiction over individual Moors, but not the territory. So what allows the Sultan to have jurisdiction over territories? The people have to recognize the state and the Sultan, and not just the Sultan singularly. There must not be a personal allegiance, right? Listen. Right here, it talks about personal allegiance. You see that? Cannot be a personal allegiance to the Sultan. There must be an allegiance to what? The state. So once you pledge allegiance to the state, you automatically pledge allegiance to who? The head of state, which is Sultan. I'm gonna say it again. "The Moors had an obligation to pledge allegiance to the state." This is what the judge is saying. "But the Moors cannot pledge allegiance directly to the Sultan cuz that's a personal allegiance, and the judges are kicking that out saying, can't be no personal allegiance. Has to be allegiance to a state." Yeah, remember now, after nineteen forty-five, when the Charter of the United Nations came out, it started saying, everybody gotta play by the same what? Rules. And the rule said, it's all about state rights. And everybody gotta pledge allegiance to what? The state. They called it what? Civilized nations. So you go to the statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article thirty-eight said what? First, it said what? It's all about international law, cuz international law acts as compliance over what? States. And since international law acts as the HR compliance over states, they said the people have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. And not to an individual. It said the tribes have to stop calling themselves tribes and calling themselves what? States. And those tribes have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. Not to the individual head of state. Read it again, listen. This is what Moors never understood. Moors have been making personal allegiances to their what? Moors Science Temples. Moors have been making personal allegiances directly to who? Noble Druali. That's no disrespect to Noble, but I'm just keeping it real. This is communication. We gotta talk, straight talk, right? Moors have been pledging allegiance to Noble Druali. And even in the International Court of Justice case of Western Sahara, they said the Moors could not be making allegiances to a private individual. The Moors had an obligation after nineteen forty-five to make allegiance to what? The state. Cuz that's the rule all around planet Earth. You see? So if, so if the Moors, if the ICJ said, you can't make a personal allegiance to the Sultan to get rights, then how the hell is the Moors ever gonna get rights making a personal allegiance to Noble Druali? Who is now deceased. Now, let's talk about the deceased part. Listen, you gotta pay close attention to Judge Castro cuz he's breaking it down, and you, it'll go right over your head if you don't break it down. I'm spending some time on this. Listen. "In the oral statement of Morocco, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance. The bearing of this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons, not territories." You see that? Meaning the Sultan can have no rights over territories if the Moors didn't recognize the state. Listen. "The territory of the vassal is not directly subject to the overlord." What's a vassal? I'm gonna break this down today. "The territory of the vassal," what's a vassal? What's a vassal? Noble?
Vassal. It's a noun, historical, a holder of land by feudal tenure or conditions of homage and allegiance. Similar words are veilain, liich, lichman, man, bondsman, or baba sour. A person or country in a subordinate position to another. Similar are subordinate, inferior, deputy, junior, or assistant.
Okay, so vassals, listen. Vassal, one of the first descriptions of the definition was a holder of land by feudal tenure or conditions of homage and allegiance. It was about, it's that word allegiance. So a vassal is about allegiance of someone who's inferior. Someone's looking up to someone. So a vassal can be what? A vassal can be what? A person. Or a vassal can be a country. So either a person or the country, right? Either a person or the country is in a subordinate position to another over them. Listen, they're talking Sultan, keep that in mind. So the Sultan, taking my time, so listen. They're talking about what is the relationship between the Sultan, the territory, and the Moors. Cuz you gotta remember, remember, in law, it's two parts to law. There's territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction. So right here, they're talking about, okay, the Sultan might have personal jurisdiction, but did he have territorial jurisdiction? Well, what makes the distinction? They left it upon the Moors. If the Moors are recognizing the, the state, then that's territorial jurisdiction. But if the Moors recognize the state, they automatically come under what? Personal jurisdiction, because the two go hand in hand. If you recognize the state, then the state got jurisdiction over you. But if you only recognizing the Sultan directly, that's an individual allegiance. That means you're not recognizing the state. That means the state can't provide protections for your territory. Listen. From the top, "In the oral statements of Morocco, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance. The bearing of this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons, not territories." The territory of the vassal, who's the vassal? Someone that's inferior, right? So the territory of the vassal to the territory of the Moors is not directly subject to the overlord. So who's the overlord? The Sultan. So the territory, the territories of the Moors is not directly subject to the Sultan. Why? Cuz the Moors don't recognize the state. Then the state don't have jurisdiction over the territory. But if the Moors recognize the Sultan directly, then the Sultan's got jurisdiction over the Moors, but they don't have, he won't have jurisdiction over the territory, cuz who is the only person that can have jurisdiction over territory? That's the state. So the Moors automatically have to pledge allegiance to the state, which automatically means you're pledging allegiance to the head of state, cuz the state comes before the Sultan. Listen. "The territory of the vassal, which is the Moors, is not directly subject to the, to the overlord, which is the Sultan. It is subject to him only indirectly during the period of allegiance. And that allegiance ends, the Sultan's allegiance ends and must be renewed." You see that? The Sultan's allegiance ends, the Sultan's allegiance ends and must be renewed at the death of the vassal. You see that? So what's happening? Allegiance. Let's read it again, take my time. "The territory of the vassal is not directly subject to the overlord." So the territory of the Moors is not directly subject to the Sultan. "It is subject to the Sultan only indirectly during the period of allegiance. And that allegiance ends and must be renewed." So what's happening? See, the Europeans knew if the Moors were pledging allegiance under private law, then after private law ends, as soon as that particular Sultan died. But if the Moors had pledged allegiance to the state, the state lives forever. You never have to, uh, pledge allegiance again to the state. Who takes two allegiances to a state? Nobody. But you pledge allegiance to an individual, and when someone else changes office, someone dies, then you recognize that new person, and you pledge allegiance to that individual, but you always, it's always consistent that you pledge allegiance to the state. Now do you understand that when we were small children and we would go to school, we have to stand there early in the morning and say what? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America." We said this over and over again. What was that about? That was about patriotism. That we will pledge allegiance to what? The state. The state flag, cuz the flag represents the state. And if you pledge allegiance to the state, you automatically pledge allegiance to who? The head of state. But the Moors are doing it just backwards. We've been pledging allegiance to private people instead of pledging allegiance to who? Her. Empire Morocco, the state itself. Black people pledge allegiance to their pastors. Black people pledge allegiance to their ministers and reverends. That's who they pledge allegiance to. The Moors Science Temple pledged allegiance to who? Noble Druali. Now, keep in mind, my conversation is a positive conversation. I'm keeping it real right now. I'm talking true. It's not me being sarcastic and condescending. We're just having straight talk. But my next question is, who do Moroccans pledge allegiance to? The state. And by pledging allegiance to the state, you automatically pledge allegiance to His Majesty, the Sultan. And it must be in that order first. It must be allegiance to the state, then the Sultan. Listen to me. This is why we needed to establish the internal states first, cuz you're pledging allegiance to what? A state. Like Ampac's example, we pledged allegiance to our state first, didn't we? Yes. Then we turn around and establish the Empire Morocco's constitution that talked about Empire Morocco, the state, and His Majesty, the Sultan. Listen. Listen. Here's the constitution for the Empire Morocco. Watch the sequential order in the preamble. You're gonna see that the Moroccans are pledging allegiance to the state, then the Sultan. And then the Sultan and the Moors come together as one, along with the state. So it's the state, Sultan, and Moors. But guess who have to recognize the state and the Sultan first? The Moors. If the Moors don't recognize the state first, then the Moors will always be subjugated. We gotta stop pledging allegiance to individuals and pledge allegiance to the state. Listen how the preamble is written. You're gonna see it now. Run the drain from the top.
Preamble. "We, the Moroccan nationals, solemnly proclaim our attachment to the periphery rights of the Moroccan territories throughout the Empire Morocco. We, the Moors people of the land, declare our self-determination and the complete emergence of our sovereign and independent Moors empire. Recalling that the Empire State of Morocco recognized the European states by treaty relations and in like manner, the European states recognize themselves as being states of the Sultan of Morocco. We, the Moors, vow to take our place among the affairs of modern states in harmony with the general rule of international law. Convinced that the Moors state government has always been inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco. We pledge our allegiance and provincial states to come under the original jurisdiction of this modern Moors constitution as an international act to govern our ancient lands as one people and one state."
Pause. That's just two paragraphs. We got five paragraphs. Already, the Moors are pledging allegiance to what? The state. It's all about the state cuz the state is about what? Land and territory. The first two paragraphs about the Moors pledging allegiance to the state, that's called a political tie. That's a political tie recognition of public law, cuz the constitution represents what? Public law. The constitution represents what? An allegiance to the state. That's paramount first. Then you start talking about the head of state. Let's get into paragraph three. Listen.
"We declare that the territorial and personal jurisdiction of the Moors shall be protected in good faith by the provisions of Moroccan treaties, laws, and regulations while cohabitating peacefully with other foreign states. We recognize that the attainment thereof can only be affected by the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereign independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality as enshrined in the International Conference of the nineteen oh six General Act of Al-Ghaziris."
So in paragraph three, the Moors are still recognizing the state, the treaties, the law, and then it says, "All this comes together as the recognition of who? The Sultan as head of state." That's paragraph three. Finally, now, talking about the Sultan as head of state. You see the sequential order the preamble's putting in? State first, then head of state. Of the triple principle of His Majesty Sultan. You see? Cuz the Sultan's head of state is like any head of state on planet Earth. The, okay, listen. The head of state is the guarantor, the guarantor of the constitution and the state, because the state is an abstract. It cannot operate on its own without the head of state. Who's the head of state? The human being sitting in the office. Listen. I'm coming back. Listen. You see? This is state. Paragraph one and two. Paragraph three started slowly, but surely recognizing the what? His Majesty the Sultan's office, right? The Sultan's office. And the Sultan himself, cuz it's the office, the sword represents the office. Then we start talking about his manifest, cuz the Sultan's sitting in the office again. It becomes fully manifested because the Moors recognize the state and the Sultan. Remember what I said, the Republic of the Moors must recognize the state first, then recognize the office, then recognize the person sitting in the office. That's the Trinity. Listen. We're in the third paragraph, Trinity. Third paragraph, Trinity. Read the third paragraph again, you're both trained.
"We declare that the territorial and personal jurisdiction of the Moors shall be protected in good faith by the provisions of Moroccan treaties, laws, and regulations while cohabitating peacefully with other foreign states. We recognize that the attainment thereof can only be affected by the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereign independence of His Majesty the Sultan." based upon the triple principle of the sovereign independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality as enshrined in the International Conference of the 1906 General Act of Al-Ghazir."
So the Sultan is the guarantor for our protections, because he's head of state. But keep in mind, it's in office. So who right now sits in the office? Your brother Abdul Smith Al Kabir. Isn't that correct? Right? Your brother Abdul Smith Al Kabir sits in the office of Sultan as head of state. He is the guarantor for all of our protections, because it requires a human being to say what? In the office of the state, because the state can't speak. It needs a human being to speak for it, and the head of state does that. Listen. So now we're talking Trinity, right? What's the Trinity? It's the triple principle. Listen. From here. "We..."
"We recognize that the attainment thereof can only be affected by the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereign independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality as enshrined in the International Conference of the 1906 General Act of Al-Ghazir."
So that's the third paragraph. We got two more to go. Now check it out. Now the Moors, the state, and the Sultan come together in the fourth paragraph. Listen.
"Moreover, His Sharifian Majesty and the Moors state government herein reclaim the Udi Posidius territorial land, air, and sea rights as ergo omnis obligations throughout the Moorish empire. We shall enjoy an autonomous political jurisdiction with a governmental institution founded by a democratic form of liberty, equality, and just protections for our economic and social development henceforth."
So the fourth paragraph out of five paragraphs, the fourth paragraph gets right into more His Sharifian Majesty, which is the Sultan, and the Moors state government. You see that? So His Sharifian Majesty represents what? The state. So the state and the head of state are one. So in the first couple of paragraphs, you recognize the state first, then you recognize the Sultan. But who recognized the state and the Sultan first? The Moors themselves. It said, "We, the Moroccan national, we the people." That's the Republic. The Republic has to recognize the state, the office, and the person sitting in the office. That's the Trinity. The Moors have to recognize the state, the state, the state, the office, the sword Excalibur, and the person sitting in the office. That's the Trinity. And we, the Moors, have to recognize the state first. That's why the sword is stuck in the state. The state's holding on to the sword, because the state recognized the sword. The state is the what? Guarantor of the sword. The office, the state recognizes the sword, because the Constitution recognized the state, and the Constitution recognized the office. And that's why the sword is stuck in the stone. Because only a proper person could sit in that seat, which is who? Moors. So now the Moors pull it out, and now the Sultan now can pull it out. Sultan Abdul Smith Al Kabir under the Trinity. Listen. Going back to Constitution. So paragraph four. Read it again, your brother.
"Moreover, His Sharifian Majesty and the Moors state government herein reclaim the Udi Posidius territorial land, air, and sea rights as ergo omnis obligations throughout the Moorish empire. We shall enjoy an autonomous political jurisdiction with a governmental institution founded by a democratic form of liberty, equality, and just protections for our economic and social development henceforth."
So now the state, the Sultan, and the Moors come together this morning. You see? Okay, last paragraph, number five.
"For these reasons, we, the indigenous Moroccans of the furthest west of the Maghreb empire hereby recognize the full powers of His Majesty the Sultan and in like manner, His Majesty the Sultan recognizes the Moroccan nationality of the Moors and reinstates the administration of the Moorish government and the competent consular judges throughout the Empire of Morocco. May the sovereign authority of the Moorish government intervene against bad actors and help bring economic, social, and police protections for all people in need. May the Fes and Barret of the Moors symbolize a trusted partnership for the Secretary General of the United Nations, whereas the Moors may be humanity's last hope of peace."
All right, so in the last paragraph, it reads as follows. "For these reasons," right? What reasons? The reasons stated above the four paragraphs. In the fifth paragraph, it says, "For these reasons above, we, the indigenous Moroccans of the furthest west of the Maghreb empire hereby recognize the full powers of His Majesty the Sultan." See? So in the last paragraph, you're recognizing the full powers of the Sultan. Why? Because he's head of state. But first we recognize, what did we recognize first?
The state.
The state. Once we recognize the state, then we can recognize the office. Once we recognize the office, then we can recognize the democratically elected Sultan. Because Democrat process is the election process. So now the Sultan's sitting there, and it says, "For these reasons, we, the indigenous Moroccans of the furthest west of the Maghreb empire hereby recognize the full powers of His Majesty the Sultan. And in like manner, His Majesty the Sultan recognizes the Moroccan nationality of the Moors and reinstates the administration of the Moorish government." You see? You see who's putting the Moors back in power? The Sultan again. But first the Moors have to recognize what? What did the Moors have to recognize? Listen. Pay close attention. First, the Moors have to recognize the state. You don't recognize the state. This is what the Judge Castro was saying. Moors cannot just have a personal allegiance. Moors have to have allegiance to what? The state. Because Arthur would not be the king if he couldn't pull the sword out of what? The state. The state was holding on to the office. Moors have been doing this, I hate to say the word, ass backwards. We've been giving personal allegiances to human beings. Instead of giving personal, I mean, it's giving, giving political allegiance to the state. It's in this order. State, office, person. Well, what did we do? We gave allegiance to who? Person, office, religious corporation. That's what we did. Listen. We're gonna go back to Judge De Castro from Spain. From the top. "In the Earl's Statements of Morocco, we find assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance. The bearing of this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons and not territories. The territory of the Moors is not directly subject to the Sultan. It is subject to the Sultan only indirectly during the period of allegiance if they have a personal allegiance. And that allegiance ends if it's personal. Because the Moors never pledged allegiance to the state. And then if it is, it says it must be renewed. Moors never renewed our allegiance to the state. We never did it. We failed as Moors. And they're talking about this in 1975. We failed as Moors. We need to look in the mirror and say, we did, we did what? We denied our own justice. There was no allegiance to the state again. And let's talk personal allegiance. There wasn't even allegiance to the Sultan. There ain't been a Sultan since 1956. So we didn't have allegiance to the Sultan, and we didn't have allegiance to the state. We did none of the above. We failed as Moors. And you keep blaming white people. Shut the hell up. Gotta blame ourselves. Black people need to blame themselves. Black people, I'm talking to you. You're not black, you're Moroccans. You gotta pledge allegiance back to the Empire Morocco and recognize His Majesty the Sultan. This is what the International Court of Justice is talking about in 1975, about your black behind. The International Court of Justice is talking directly to these people that falsely call themselves Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans is not a nationality. You still negro-black and colored under the K system of the United States, because you still the redhead stepchild of the United States of America. According to the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, you have failed to return to Morocco to pledge your allegiance to the Empire. I'm talking, people think they're black Indians. You ain't a black Indian. You're a Moor subject according to treaties. And you have failed to return to Morocco to pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan. We, as the people, the copper-colored people, have failed. They're talking about this in 1975 in our face. I started off reading this case and showing you about the independent Moors. And it was commonly known as self-determination. The Moors have a right to choose their political status. And they have been, they have continued to choose to pledge allegiance to ministers, pastors, and reverends. They pledge allegiance to sport athletes, rappers. They pledge allegiance to all these individual, personal allegiances to people instead of pledging allegiance to the state of the Empire. You gotta see what's happening. We've delayed our own justice. I'm gonna read it from the top, because I'm starting to close out. "In the Earl's Statements of Morocco, we find assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance. Bearing this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons and not territories. The territory of the Moors is not directly subject to the Sultan. It is the subject to the Sultan only indirectly during the period of allegiance, and that allegiance ends and must be renewed at the death of the Sultan or the vassal. In the period of colonization by Spain..." Listen. "The Sultans are masters of the territory which falls de facto under their sovereignty and seek to become masters of the territories, which they regard as belonging to them de jour in the Blaiseva. In any case, a territorial claim such as Morocco's claim to the territory of Western Sahara cannot be founded on a personal allegiance." You see that last sentence? So the ICJ saying, when these Moors wake up, if they don't pledge allegiance to the state, then these Moors cannot get their sovereign rights back of the Empire Morocco. If these Moors wake up and keep pledging allegiance to Noou Drouali, they can't get their sovereign rights back, because they're not pledging allegiance to the state. If they keep pledging allegiance to their favorite rapper and entertainer, they can't get their sovereign powers back of the state. We have failed as a people. Now let me ask you a question, because I'm starting to close out. This case came out in 1975, talking about Moors. Western Sahara. I almost guarantee you that Moors never knew nothing about this case. Why? Because your Moorish American teachers never told you about a case that came out in 1975. Now let's back up another case. Let's talk about another case. How about France versus United States of America of the year 1952? That talks about Moors and the Sultan. But Moors never had no clue about that case of 1952. Now, listen. All the Moors know about the Sundry Free Moors Act of 1789. 1789 is what Moors keep talking about. But yet, there are modern, contemporary case law that Moors could have been studying from 1952 and 1975, instead of going back to read the 1789 case of South Carolina. Why are the Moorish Science Temple grand sheiks telling the Moors about two International Court of Justice cases, right? France versus United States of America in 1952 was the judgment. And then you got the advisory opinion of the Western Sahara of 1975. Why don't Moors know about these cases? Huh? Why hasn't Farrakhan told the people about these cases? Why hasn't the NAACP told the people about these cases? Why hasn't the HBCU president told the people about these cases? Why hasn't BET told the people about these cases? Why are they talking about these cases during Black History Month? They got four weeks to bring it up? Nobody wants to talk about the Moors. And why is it that nobody wants to talk about the Moors? Because the word "Moors" is a short title for Moroccan. And Moroccans is the most powerful nationality on planet Earth, because Moroccans, i.e. the Moors, get to control the sovereignty of what? What do the Moors get to control the sovereignty of? As I started to close out. We get to control Excalibur. And what is Excalibur? The pin. The political pin of governance of a state. And everything is about state rights. What has a supreme power on planet Earth? It's states. What has a supreme power on planet Earth? Laws of the state. What has a supreme power on planet Earth? The laws of the courts, case law, the judges. So the executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch have all the power of the state. Then the next question is, who has jurisdiction over states? Plural. That's the Empire Morocco. The Empire Morocco's got jurisdiction over several states and countries in Morocco. And this is why they never wanted black people to know that they were Moors, i.e. Moroccans. This is why the FBI infiltrated the Moors Science Temple and told all those Moors, they punked them and told them, "You better go out there and tell them you're Americans." They told the Nation Islam the same thing. "You better not tell nobody they're Moors and Moroccans. You guys are blacks." Because blacks are all what? Citizens of the United States of America. Then they turn around and call everybody Indians. What are Indians? Indians keep claiming they're in the jurisdiction of what? America. Everybody's saying they're Americans. Nobody's saying they're Moroccans. Nobody can claim Excalibur except for who? Moroccans. But the Moroccans, i.e. the Moors, because the short title for Moroccans is what? More. The Moors themselves have to recognize what first? According to the judge, there can be no personal allegiance. It must be a political allegiance to what? The state. You see how he started off? He said, "The Moroccan state." That's his first words. Then he talked about personal allegiance, second. Then he summed it up by saying, "Well, there can be no claim over the territory. There can be no sovereignty with a personal allegiance. The sovereignty comes from what? Allegiance to what? The state." So it's the state, that's the stone, right? The megalithic stone. The Moors, the Moors have built megalithic stones all over planet Earth. All these capital buildings. All these capital buildings got what color on the top of the roof? Green. Look at all the old capital buildings around planet Earth. All the museums, et cetera. All of them have green roofs, right? You see the green hue? I know you can't see it, but anybody go back and watch the movie, Excalibur's always lit up in green. What does that represent? The copper-colored people. Copper-colored people. Copper, when it turns old, it turns what? Green. All the Moors buildings have a green roof on top of it. You see? That green is a special color. It represents power. It represents something ancient. Green is a hue of something ancient. So this is why they got the green hue on there. If you watch Superman, talking about Kyle Il, what'd they use? What was the color? The kryptonite? Green. It was a green hue. You see what I'm saying? It represents what? Power. It represents power. This is why the Sultans put the green star on the flag, because that green represents what? The ancient Moors. The ancient Moors, that seat is ancient that those Sultans were sitting in. The Arabs were sitting in the seats that were ancient. They're Moors established. The Arabs came and sat in those seats temporarily. Now they don't even sit in it no more. So guess who's supposed to pull out the Excalibur now? The Moors. But the Moors have to represent, have to recognize what first? The state? The office of the state? And then the person makes it full manifest, right? The person makes it full manifest, because Abdul Smith Al Kabir made the seat manifest. But what makes it fully manifested? The Moors gotta recognize the state, the office of the state of Sultan, and then the Sultan himself is the human being who's the guarantor for all of our what? Protections. So the last thing I'll say is this. As the Moors, in my illustration, as the Moors subjects, we have to recognize themselves first as Moors subjects according to the treaties, because treaty's supreme law of land, and your status is Moor subject if you still naturalize. And what are you trying to ultimately achieve to become a what? Moroccan national? So you gotta start taking the journey to return to Morocco and pledge your allegiance to what? The state. And recognize who? The Sultan. And who can assist you with that? That's the Wazir Regional Council, Trusteeship Council, to assist you with that. So that's what the Moors have to do. We'll continue to talk about this in the next class. All right? I hear with that? I hear with that? Islam.